All right, it's eight thirty. We will call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. Item three on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. I don't see anyone, so we'll move on to item number four, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Any discussion or additions, corrections to the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, action to approve the purchase of e-poll pads from No Inc. Would there be a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
In front of you is a proposal from No Inc., which is a company that sells these poll pads. These poll pads would replace the current e-poll books that the county uses. And so with you is what it kind of lays out. It looks like, well, we would like to purchase thirty-five of them, just to have, to be able to use them at the vote centers, to have a few extra. And in case we do ever decide to add in another vote center, we would have plenty. You can see the onsite support as well. It looks like they're quoting us ten thousand dollars. That would be for onsite support, five thousand for the primary, and five thousand dollars for the onsite support for the general. Do you guys have any questions for me?
If we sign this or accept this bid, are we required to use the onsite support? Or do we have some flexibility and, you know, say we get through the primary, everything goes well, and we're like, no, we don't need the onsite support for the general. Is that something we can say aye or no, or are we bound by this contract?
No, I think the onsite support could still be talked about. However, I would recommend and feel better to get through the primary and the general with onsite support from No Inc. And no one'd realize it's ten thousand dollars to have somebody here to troubleshoot any, you know, issues or anything like that. But I think with, you know, knowing that we would have that support, really training with them, seeing what they see on election day, you know, seeing them troubleshoot some of those. I would like to have that. I would feel secure having that.
I think I'd feel more secure, at least for the general. That's a big election. We want to make sure we're operating efficiently and correct with our first time with the general with this system, so, yeah, it's five thousand, but I think it's appropriate.
Correct, yep. We could drop it at that time. And I did reach out to the surrounding counties that are using these poll pads, and most of them are getting onsite support because it is so much pressure and that we want to make sure that we're doing a good job. And just to have that extra support to be able to troubleshoot, you know, and they've got direct contact with people that we sometimes don't have when we opt out for onsite support. So, yeah, I think it's certainly something after we get through this year and we really train on them and get our IT, you know, looking at them and looking at what some issues that we have with them. And when I talk about any issues, I'm talking about, you know, the printer paper, you know, changing out the printer paper and some of those things that some of the election workers have, may have difficulties with. But that's all stuff that we can help them through, but we won't know that until we get through this first go around with them, so.
And Jenna, on this particular piece of hardware or software that comes with it, has our IT department been in close communication with you guys and looked over things as well?
Yes, they have.
Okay.
Are we anticipating that the city will continue to use our hardware or our software? Or how is this going to interlink with the city election in the future?
Yeah, I think, you know, the city, like Bonnie, certainly wants to have a good partnership with the county, especially when it comes to elections. And so, yeah, I definitely foresee them wanting to use these poll pads.
And will they have to do a separate contract then with these folks?
Yes, they will.
And they're aware of that?
Yes, they are.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Borsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item six, we will recess as the Board of County Commissioners. And item seven, reconvene as the Brookings County Board of Equalization. So, item eight, approval of the agenda for the Board of Equalization. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Nine is the Oaths of Office that you all have in front of you. So each member is required to sign the oath of office and provide that back to Jenna. As that comes around for signatures, I think we've got that last one sheet with everybody's signature? Or two sheets? Excellent. Moving on to item number ten, approval of corrections. The first, we'll do item ten A. Action to approve correction to Candace L. Carlson, parcel number four zero one four zero dash zero zero four zero zero dash zero zero nine dash zero zero. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Want to present this one?
Yeah, this is a property where the homeowner contacted us after the assessment notices were mailed out and upon review of the property discovered that it's in the process of a remodel. It's mostly taken apart and not so much put back together, so we've adjusted the value accordingly.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, action to approve correction to Timothy P. Vanderpan, parcel number one two zero 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 dash one zero nine five zero dash three one three dash zero zero. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion on this one?
This property here was recently up for auction. It's a bare piece of ag land. We were contacted by the auctioneer, and there was a discrepancy in acres. We were short by thirteen and a half acres roughly, and there was a recent survey done that supported that change, so we're actually adjusting the value up on this one, roughly forty thousand dollars.
Any comments or questions by the commission? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item eleven, presentation of the 2022 Assessment of Real Property and Building Permit Information.
So the 2022 assessments in Brookings County were set following South Dakota Codified Law ten thirteen thirty-seven in that set of sales in the past year in different neighborhoods or areas of study and adjust the 2022 values accordingly. We, our median level of assessment is acceptable through Department of Revenue if it's between eighty-five and one hundred percent, meaning the complete list of countywide sales that were labeled as good sales. We ended up, after all the adjustments were made and the 2022 values were set at eighty-eight point seven nine percent on the median. And the reason that number is important is because that determines next year's taxable percentage. So you never pay tax on one hundred percent of your full assessed value. This year, with ending at an eighty-eight point seven nine median ratio on our sales, that correlates to a point nine five seven taxable factor for next year's taxes on non-egg properties. Ag were considered to be at a hundred percent of assessment, a hundred percent of market value due to the productivity method of assessment. So the factor again on the ag land and ag properties is eighty-five. Just for comparison purposes, in 2021, we ended our assessment with a median ratio of ninety-one point seven six. So we fell short about three percent in comparison to last year when trending the market. We just had some extraordinary sale prices paid on properties, and we just couldn't get there with the adjustments that we made. So the taxable factor last year, for the taxes that are being paid right now, is point nine two six for comparison. A little farther down on the sheet here, you'll see 2021's ending value on the abstract was three, three point five billion. In the past year, reappraisal amount was a positive seventy-seven, almost seventy-eight million. Reappraisal is anything that is done as far as trending the market and changing values or any new construction that's done within TIF boundaries is considered a reappraisal total. We also had just about forty-two million dollars in allowable growth in the county last year. And growth is anything that's a newly constructed property that's outside of a TIF boundary or property that would be changing class or coming off of an exemption. That would all be considered growth. So we ended at three point six billion total value after the reappraisal and growth amounts are added in. And you can see farther down here, the percentage of growth and how it's trended from at least 2016 through current. Last year's growth percentage was just over two percent, but we have to consider the fact that we had twenty, just about twenty million dollars one-time growth because of two TIF districts that were dissolved in the last assessment year, that being the Seeler addition and Valley View addition. So for 2022, we're hanging just over one percent for growth percentage total, and that's about average if you can look at the trend there. Farther down here, we show a list of all the exemptions that are currently on the books, the number of parcels that are receiving that type of exemption, and the total exemption amount. And then finally, a total total for countywide of all exemption properties and total exemption amount. That's it for that. Any questions?
Quickly again, ag buildings exemptions. You know, I was thinking more that was a discretionary formula, but is that, what is the difference between the two?
Two different things. So the ag building exemptions is anybody that has an ag property and themselves as the owner or a relative to the third degree is residing on that property, they're eligible for up to a ten thousand dollar ag building exemption. So if they have at least ten thousand dollars of ag building value, the exemption comes right off the top. The discretionary formula also applies to those ag properties on new construction that value over ten thousand dollars in value. We put those on the books in twenty percent increments for a series of four years until we get to the full and true.
So somebody builds a twenty thousand dollar building, and that's their only, that's their new building they have, ten thousand that is automatically exempt, the other ten thousand of that would then go discretionary for five years?
In that case, we would, we would run the discretionary formula off the top right away, and then if there's any taxable value left over, the ag building exemption would take care of that. So in that case, you'd have the five thousand dollars taxable value in the first year. Well, that five thousand would be exempt because of the ag building.
Ten thousand exempt.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Pierce?
When you look at the TIF districts, do you know off the top of your head, and that's maybe unfair to ask, how many TIF districts we have in the county now?
In the county, I think we have eleven.
Eleven?
Yep.
And this number that's on here, and if we could scoot that back up a little bit, a little bit more so we can see that number. The one that said TIF districts and
All the way down at the bottom.
There we go.
Seven hundred and thirty-six parcels within TIF districts right now, and the number off the side as an exemption amount is actually just the total assessed value of all those properties within the TIFs.
And do you just have a rough idea when you say the total assessed value, okay? Approximately, how much is being paid on the increments on those eleven TIFs? Any, any rough idea?
Boy, I don't have a rough idea on that. I will in about a month when we start working on the abstract. We'll have to do a TIF worksheet for Department of Revenue that has all those broke out between each individual TIF district, their increment and base values.
That'd be great if you could share that with us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this portion? Hearing none, we'll move to item number twelve, presentation of the tentative 2022 numbers for towns, townships, and school districts.
We back up one and do building permit info?
Yep, building permit info. Go ahead.
This is kind of a nice comparison if we're talking about growth and new houses being built when we compare from year to year. We have the building permits issued by the city and the building permits issued in all the small towns, and then the building permits issued by the county out in the rural areas. The total permits is actually down about a hundred total permits from last year. But if you move farther down the page, you can see that the new house permits are actually up forty-one from a year ago. The total parcel count in the county continues to grow with new plating of land. We've gained a couple hundred parcels every year for, you know, the last seven, eight years there. You can see the trend. Any questions on that?
No, we'll move to item twelve.
The tentative numbers here is the same format as the first page we went over, but it's just broke down between the townships. It shows where we ended for 2021's full and true assessed value, how much reappraisal we've had in each township, how much growth we've had in each township, and then the final 2022 value and a percentage of growth. You will see on this document here, there are some negative reappraisal amounts. We tried yesterday to pinpoint the exact reason that some of these townships are suffering negative reappraisal, but it could literally be anything from a property qualifying for ag. So the value would be essentially cut in half if it's an ag property. It could be a house that was burned down. It could be, you know, anything really. An exemption that didn't exist last year and now exists this year is considered negative reappraisal. The good news is we had at least some growth in every area here. Another thing to consider when you're looking at these township numbers too is the fact that our office doesn't set the ag land values, and the ag land values are a huge chunk of the total in these townships. So for 2022's productivity numbers, you probably remember me saying this at an earlier commission meeting, but the grass top dollar increased by two percent compared to 2021, and the crop top dollar made no change. And seventy percent of Brookings County soil inventory is crop, rated as highest and best used for crops. So seventy percent of the ag land in these townships didn't change value from twenty-one to twenty-two. Something to consider. Moving on to the small towns, we didn't have any negative reappraisal in the small towns. We've actually seen a pretty strong market in some of these smaller towns that didn't exist maybe in prior years. And I think the fact is that there's just, you know, not a lot of houses on the market that are currently for sale, and that drives people to look in places other than in Brookings City for houses to buy. So you can see again the 2021 value reappraisal growth and where we ended for 2022. Actually, had just a little bit stronger growth in the small towns in comparison to countywide by about a tenth of a percent. The third page here is the same numbers broken down by the school districts. Again, we didn't have any negative reappraisal. We had growth in every school district. And then a final 2022 value with the percentage of growth equaling countywide. The last line on that page underneath the total shows those total assessed reappraisal and growth with taking the TIF increments out, just reporting them separately, basically, is what I'm doing down there in the bottom line. Any questions on those three pages?
Move on to item, Agenda item thirteen for the presentation of the 2022 Renewable Resource Energy Tax Credits.
So this page here pertains to a law that's on the books that allows us to, if we discover an energy efficient method for heating and cooling a home, more often than not, it's a geothermal system. Whatever our cost system will value that geothermal system at, we're allowed to exempt that amount from their assessment for four consecutive years. Interestingly enough, we didn't add any new properties with geothermal or renewable energy credits in this current assessment year, but we have these three boxes showing how we're cycling through. The top ones were added in 2019. They will come off for next year's assessment or for 2023. The middle box was added a year later. Will come off a year later, and the same thing for 2021 box. Any questions on that?
Hearing none, we'll move on to item fourteen, action to approve new applications for tax exempt status. And there are several. Do we want to approve those in a lump? Yes, typically? Would there be a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I believe all but one of these new applications for tax exempt are lots that were purchased by Brookings Area Habitat for Humanity to construct habitat homes on. They're allowed exemptions. They have other properties that are receiving the exemption. The one that would be an oddity in the group would be the application for the Brookings Football Club or the Brookings Soccer Association. They built that new building on Main Avenue South, was completed in the last assessment year, and because of the transfer of ownership from the builder to the Brookings Football Club, it now becomes an exempt property. We did handle a property tax abatement for the partial years' taxes on this property at an earlier commission meeting, if you remember to. Because of the timing that they took possession in March of last year, we weren't able to get this application at this meeting a year ago. Any questions on those new applications?
Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item number fifteen, action to approve tax exempt status exemptions.
This list here was published according to law Brookings Papers and the surrounding area papers, and it's just a complete list of all the properties that are currently receiving tax exemptions that have been on the books at least a year prior, if not longer. The name of the person applying for the exemption, the legal description of the property, and the exempt class that they fall under, being R for religious, C for charitable, B for benevolent, E for education. There's an INC for an incubator business. And I think that covers it. Any questions on that continuing tax exempt list?
As, as Brookings Habitat sells and they transfer their property to that kind of stuff, does that come off immediately then, right away, or how does that work?
Depending on the timing of the sale, it'll either be an added tax in the finance office or it'll be just added on to the next assessment year, the 2023 assessment year. Correct.
Would there be a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item sixteen, action to approve owner occupied status applications. Would there be a motion to approve?
Second.
Comments on this list?
Maybe just to back up a little bit, the assessment notices are due to all taxpayers by March first, and we sent them out this year on February twenty-second. We always try to get them out in mid-February because that gives our office and the homeowner enough time to have conversations about values that have been changing and maybe, you know, get these corrections on the books instead of sending them out March first, giving them just a short window to appeal, and then having you guys hear a bunch of appeals that may not be necessary. So beings that we sent the assessment notices out on February twenty-second, and the deadline to apply for owner occupied status according to state law is March fifteenth. These applications on this list are properties that have submitted application between the mailing of the notices and the deadline of the application. There is a bottom portion of the list here where there's a few properties that we're needing to remove owner occupied status for the 2022 assessment year. And the reason we don't just wait until next year's assessment to remove these ones is we've either been notified by another county that that person has applied to receive this owner occupied tax credit in another county on another property within Brookings County, or the use of the property has changed to a rental property within the past year. Questions?
How does this list, where we have new applicants, interface with the certificate of real estate value? Are these people then that did not ask for owner occupied on their certificate? What happened there?
Yeah, sadly, a lot of times when those certificates come in, they come in either blank, partially filled out, or the small shaded box in the center of that certificate is left, you know, not filled out. So as long as that box is filled out with every answer, answered yes or no, and there's a signature by the buyer of the property, we can allow that certificate to be used in place of the owner occupied application. There is a full application that we send out if that certificate of value is not done completely or accurately. There is a full application that we send out if that certificate of value is not done completely or accurately. Mm-hmm.
Question on that?
Yeah.
Cause I get to deal with those quite a bit.
Yes.
Um, when you say fully, a lot of times we see it filled out with you own other property in the other state, and they say no, and then they're done, they quit. When you say that, do every question need to have an answer to it?
Yeah, so if the only question would be is, do you own other property in the United States, yes or no? The only way that I really can check that is I can search by name within the Brookings County records. And if they don't own a property in Brookings County, then I assume that they're answering that question honestly. Um, that's all the investigation we do there, but there is a place on there that says, I own the property as of November 1st, I occupied the property as of, and then you have to fill in the date that you're going to occupy the property. This is the only property. You have to have four yes or no answers, and then a signature. And, you know, 50% of the time, one of those things is missing, so we cannot not allow that application to stand on its own. We will, our office will mail out the full application at that point.
Previously, uh, before you were running there, we were told that even if we they still had to come in and do uh,
Viewpoint on that has changed. As long as that box is filled out correctly and accurately, it does say on there, to continue your owner occupied tax status, please fill out this box. Are they quote unquote continuing the status? I think that was the question beforehand, and now as long as that's filled out correctly, we allow it.
Perfect, thank you.
So, we have a motion on the table, any further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 17, action to approve the 2022 Reparium Buffer Strip Classification Applications. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Jacob?
Um, there was a, a good change that was made to the reparium year, according to law. They made the application good for 10 years, and they also made the um, reduction in value from a 40% reduction, increased it up to a 50% reduction. And what our office does is, we reach out to anybody who has applied and qualified, or just applied and been denied in the past, and send them a letter stating that the application deadline is October 15th. You need to fill out an application per every parcel you want to apply. And the bottom section here is, is what we receive back as far as completed applications. And we have three individual owners on, on five parcels for a total value reduction countywide, just under 54,000.
Jacob, did you just say the law changed now you only every year?
Yes, if you apply now, that application is good for 10 years.
Excellent.
In the past, the, the amount of value reduction for some people did not make it advantageous for them to come to our office every year to make applications, so they just didn't. We're, you know, hoping that the law change allows them to see that if I do it every 10 years, you know, we'll get it on the books.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in fa- in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item 18, action to approve disabled veteran exemptions. Would there be a motion to approve?
Second.
Jacob, any comments?
Um, we continue according to law with the exemptions for 100% permanent and total disabled veterans. As long as their property is owner occupied, they're eligible to receive up to $150,000 worth of assessed value exempt from taxation. Uh, this list actually just continues to grow little by little every year. And you can see when you scroll down at the bottom, um, the total amount of property value exempt from taxation is $7.8 million this year, so that's quite significant. It's a good program that exists out there for these disabled veterans. Any questions on that?
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item number 19, action to approve tax moratorium exemptions. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
These properties are currently on the books because they've done renovations to historic properties, and they've been approved by the South Dakota State Historical Society as such. And that society actually notifies the assessor's office of the um, type of work that's done on the property. And we are to determine the amount of value added to the property because of the historic renovations, and then that exemption is on the books for seven years.
Any questions on these? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item number 20, action to approve partially taxed exemptions. Would there be a motion to approve?
Second.
Jacob?
These properties are partially taxed because they're using a portion of their property for something that doesn't fall under the allowed uses for tax exemptions. These properties have to apply for this on a short form change on a year-to-year basis, and we review that with the property owners. This year, for your information, was a long-form renewal year, so they had to fill out the complete tax exemption application again, and all those were reviewed. Um, this list reflects those updates.
Any questions on these? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 21, action to approve discretionary formula exemptions. Would there be a motion to approve?
Second.
This very, very long report is um, just a complete report of all the properties that qualify for discretionary exemption, whether it would be, um, like we already mentioned, ag buildings at value, new construction ag buildings at value over $10,000, newly plotted lots for development that are plotted in groups of five or more, or commercial or industrial properties that value over $30,000, or residential commercial properties or apartments that value over $30,000. Um, the only difference being is the rest of the exemptions will cycle at 20, 40, 60, 80% increments, and the apartments are at 25, 50, 75, 100. So they're one year shorter on the discretionary process.
Any questions on this list? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item 22, action to approve elderly tax freeze exemptions. Would there be a motion to approve?
Second.
These applications have already been approved by the Brookings County Finance Office as far as the income requirements goes. Once that is done, then they're sent over to the Equalization Office, and there's one stipulation on the application that the property must be valued at less than $208,852. Um, and if it's not, then the property owner does not qualify for the elderly freeze. However, if the same property owner has qualified for the elderly freeze on that property in any subsequent year, that value is, a value of the property is kind of disregarded. So this list here um, is everything that we had through the April 1st deadline on the application. Now the deadline itself is kind of a soft deadline. We will get applications from now through who knows when, and we'll handle those as property tax abatements if they come in.
Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. That's the end of our list already. Item 23 is adjourned as the Brookings County Board of Equalization. Is there a motion to approve? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None?
Thank you.
We will take a recess until 1 o'clock where we, where we will reconvene, I think in, next door, Stacy? Stay in here.
We'll be in here with the election today. The city has that, the community room in use for absentee voting.
So we'll reconvene at 1 o'clock for our discussion.